I'm getting a lot of feedback on my sound. Okay, well, welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for March the first, 22, being called to order at 2:17. And the protocol for COVID continues for this meeting as well. The boards of commission meetings are, will continue to be closed. You can stream the meeting on Glendale TV, AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99, Spectrum Cable, channel 6. If you have any comments or questions, call in to 818-937-8100. Comments on a specific item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Thank you. Rule call.
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. What's next, please? Your report?
The agenda for the Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, special public meeting of the city council was posted on February 23rd, 2022, on the bulletin board outside city.
Thank you. And Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of city council. The intent of presenting this proposed policy is to establish the criteria and a consistent process for the placement, acceptance and placement of monuments and memorial plaques that are requested by individuals or groups on city property. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Christine Powers, our senior executive analyst, for a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Christine, Ms. Powers, before that, can I read the, this in the, in the record? Item number one, Management Services Regarding Conservation of Public Monument and Memorial Plaque Policy: A Resolution Establishing the Public Monument and Memorial Plaque Policy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of council. Allow me to share this presentation with you. There, we go. And I believe... So, before you is the proposed monument and memorial plaque policy. Over the years, our Community Services and Parks Department has received many requests for memorial plaques throughout our city parks. These requests had been denied largely because we didn't have a policy in place. And recently, we have gotten a couple of requests for public monuments. And with that, we present this policy to you to incorporate all of this so we have a consistent way of applying or processing these requests. I'm sorry, just give me... I'm so sorry. For some reason, I cannot... Lisette, can you just help me really quick? I apologize. It's not in like, presentation mode. Okay. Okay, I apologize for that. So, the proposed policy before you, this is the gist of it, is that for public monuments, any requests that come in would come into the city manager. These proposals would go to Arts and Culture Commission for recommendation first. So, staff would prepare a report for their recommendation. Should the proposed public monument be located in a city park facility, then it would also go to the Parks, Rec. and Community Services Commission for their recommendation prior to coming to city council for final approval. For memorial plaques, we would have an application process. These applications would go to the Director of Community Services and Parks. And appeals would go to the Parks Recreation and Community Service Commission if the applicant is not satisfied with the decision of the Parks Director. The general guidelines for this policy would establish the criteria and process and placement of monuments and memorial plaques that would be sponsored by individuals or groups on city property. Once a monument or a memorial plaque is approved, it would become property of the city of Glendale. And by accepting placing and publicly displaying these privately funded and donated monuments or memorial plaques, the city would deem these as an expression of government speech. And as such, any accepted monument or memorial plaque is meant to convey a government message and is not for the purpose of providing a forum for public speech. So, any request promoting, promoting violence or hatred against individuals or groups based on attributes as defined in this policy, such as race, gender, or disability, will not be permitted. Additionally, monuments and memorial plaques shall be limited to a single representation per person or event commemorated to avoid any duplication. So, this essentially are the criteria for monuments. As defined, monuments are memorial statues, objects, or the installation of permanent materials to commemorate individuals, groups, events, or concepts. The monument should have an identifiable connection to the history, cultural makeup, or the identity of a city. And monuments are not to be issued for living persons. And we would ask for a minimum of five years from the occurrence or conclusion of an event or the passing of a person before a monument is erected for that event or person. Should there be a desire to commemorate a living person or a person who has passed within that five-year period or an event within that five-year period, the request must include a detailed rationale as to why the criteria should not apply for council's consideration. And essentially, the approval of monuments, the criteria for the commissions and for council to consider are appropriateness, compatibility with the surrounding environment, the impact on use of public space to make sure it doesn't impact existing park or right-of-way functions, the aesthetics. We want to have high-quality craftsmanship monuments erected in the community. Maintenance and insurance, so applicants must demonstrate that they have the appropriate funding to secure the monument, the installation, and the insurance during the installation process, and safety to make sure monuments are safe to pass or by and moving forward can weather time. And then you see here, to the right, is the process, as we discussed, of the approval, the recommendation, and final approval going to city council. After this process, the final approval for installation of a monument won't occur until the applicant has entered into a signed agreement with the city. As mentioned, the applicant would pay all costs associated with the designed fabrication, placement permitting, site prep, and installation of the monument. Then after the monument has been installed, the city would pay for all basic maintenance. But moving forward, if the applicant wants any additional maintenance or refurbishment of the piece, they can enter into a separate agreement with the city for this. Now, moving on to the other half of the policy. Memorial plaques refer to bronze metal plates attached to a concrete bench or picnic table, and they would be placed in a city park to honor someone who has passed away. The person must be recognized for a notable contribution to the community, such as service on council, a board or commission, or volunteer leadership in the community. And the applicant must pay for the plaque, the bench, or picnic table set, and all associated costs. And staff is currently identifying what that would cost, and it'll be part of the citywide fee study. As with monuments, memorial plaques will not be issued to a living person, but they don't have the same five-year wait period as monuments. And the city will assume responsibility for maintaining the plaque and the bench or picnic table it is affixed to. And then this is the policy recommendation for the approval of memorial plaques. The application would be submitted to the Parks Department. The Director of the Community Services and Parks Department would make the approval and final location for a space that's appropriate. And if the applicant is not happy with the decision, they can appeal it to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission within 15 days of that decision. And that concludes staff report. If there's any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Are there any questions, comments from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for this report and putting in a process in place or suggesting a process that hopefully we'll approve. My concern is, I know that there were some memorials that were in process already. How much of a delay would adoption of this cause to those that have already gone through a significant number of steps?
To answer your question, Councilmember Kasakian, so there is, I neglected to mention, there is a couple of amendments to the resolution that were emailed to you just prior to this meeting. One is to address that and the Filipino Friendship Monument that has already been approved or recommended for approval by the Community Services and Parks Department, for that not to go to the Arts and Culture Commission and just to come directly to council for their consideration. So, that is the only one that's currently in the process that would come straight to city council and not apply to this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay, any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
Yes. I wanted to ask a question here that I brought up in our briefings. But on page five of the staff report, it talks about the proposed monument and memorial plaque policy, or it says, "Once it's been adopted, the city manager designated is authorized to amend the adopted policy as may be appropriate, necessary, or in the city's best interest." I just wanted, and we talked about this, I wanted to make sure there were some guidelines around that because we're approving a policy and this seems just very open-ended
Sure.
that the city manager can modify this policy at any time.
Sure. Councilmember Brotman, members of council, as part of the revisions to the resolution that Ms. Powers mentioned, the second one of those revisions would modify that particular provision to provide that the city manager is authorized to make minor non-substantive amendments that intended to carry out the intent of the policy. So, that is part of the modification that's before you. And we ask that when you are ready to make the motion, that you move it as amended.
Okay, thank you very much. That definitely resolves that concern I had.
Okay, great. Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just to be clear, this is all perspective. We're not looking back and, you know, there are some monuments to people that haven't passed away and that haven't come before council or maybe arts and, I mean, the Arts and Culture or Parks Department. Those get to stay.
That is correct, Councilmember Najarian. This is perspective. This is moving forward.
The mufal oak isn't gone yet, is he? He, he gets to keep that oak or whatever they have there for him. And I know there were a couple to Ginger Brenburg throughout the city. There's a tree with a plaque out in front of Perkins Plaza. And we're not tearing any statues down, right?
No, sir.
Okay. That's fine with me, I think. Provides a little bit of framework for the pursuit of these. Are we gonna say that, are we gonna encourage the location? I know at the Armenian Museum, we've got, which I think is where the Filipino friendship is gonna go, and perhaps the Comfort Woman. Are we gonna encourage location in a particular area? Or it's gonna be up to the applicant to make a proposal?
Councilmember Najarian, so the request can come in from the person who, they can request whatever location they want, but part of the process would be for the city manager to evaluate that and take into consideration things such as the sister city park that might be going in or appropriate uses, and make a recommendation as to the most appropriate location for a proposed monument.
Madam Mayor, if I may, when the council initially looked at the design for Central Park, they did kind of identify the pathway that leads from Colorado to the library as the Monument Walk, if you will, where the Korean Comfort Women statue was originally placed and around there. Certainly, it could be at other places on the east-west axis, or it could be in a place that the, the person donating the monument or plaque requests. But the council did identify that area as a place to start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all.
Well, my, my question is, who will make the final decision then on that, on the placement? Who inevitably makes the final decision?
Ultimately, it would be council, Mayor Devine. So, if there is a proposed location and council does not find that location appropriate, then you are welcome to suggest alternate locations.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right, then, with this item, do I have a motion?
May I move the item?
With the amendments, with the amendments, please?
With the amendment, with the amendment.
Madam Mayor, I'll second the, the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, thank you very much. Next item?
Library's Arts and Culture Regarding Citywide Public Art Landmarks: Artsakh Avenue Overhead and Gateway Public Art Pieces. A. Motion authorizing the city manager or designated to enter into an agreement for commission of artwork, subject to approval by the city attorney with Matthew Mazota Studio in the amount not to exceed $500,000 dispersed from the Urban Art Program Fund to design, fabricate, and install a public art piece entitled "Bountiful" for the Artsakh Avenue Overhead Public Art Piece. B. Motion authorizing the city manager or designated to enter into an agreement for commission of artwork, subject to approval by the city attorney, with Paul Coxedge Studio in the amount not to exceed $550,000 dispersed from Urban Art Program Fund to design, fabricate, and install public art piece entitled "Curtain for Artsakh Avenue Gateway Public Art Piece."
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of city council. As part of the proposed improvements on Artsakh Avenue in the entertainment district in an effort to activate that part of downtown Glendale, there are two landmark art pieces that are being proposed for installation, the coined overhead and gateway art pieces. And we are bringing forward this item to you based on a recommendation by Arts and Culture Commission. I am going to turn this over to Dr. Gary Schaefer for the presentation and open it up to questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Very excited to be here today to present these two world-class artworks that the Arts and Culture Commission is recommending be placed, as said, on Artsakh Avenue to help transform the area into a true arts and entertainment district. In December of 2019, council approved the Artsakh plans and the placement of three artworks on the street. In October of 2020, council approved Arts and Culture and Library Arts and Culture to contract with Labas Projects to help us retain artists for several sites around Glendale, but these two are the two largest. And then on January 28th, 2022, the Arts and Culture Commission approved two recommendations for these art pieces. There were over 256 applications to the RFQ that was launched in 2021. And Arts and Culture Commission Chairperson Sue Bell Yank represented the commission on the Artist Review and Selection Committee. So, we're here today to present the two pieces that they're recommending for placement there. So, I will, hopefully you can see the screen. So, the first is an overhead piece called "Bountiful" by Matthew Mazota Studios. And we've actually have a video here. There's no sound underneath, so your sound will be working. And I'm just gonna start that video and hopefully it will progress for you. So, as the video guides us underneath the tree, we note on the trunk as well as the roots, the roots serve as seating. We notice these flowers and plants that are indigenous to the Artsakh region. We see the swing, which will be more like a rocking chair than a true swing. And then we see these, the wooden or wood-like canopy. And in a moment, we'll see how that will actually undulate in the breeze. This is another installation, completely different from the tree, but using the similar principle and process. And so, it will bring this true movement to the piece for people to enjoy. And we certainly feel, as Mr. Galanian said, this will truly activate this area of Artsakh and transform it into an arts and culture destination. And in a moment, I will share a visual of, from Studio 111, of kind of their vision for the street in this area, as well as the artist, how he's kind of imposed the tree more as a placeholder so that you can see exactly what it will look like there. We'll just let the video finish. It's truly a monumental work of art. All selections, all artists that submitted were asked to reflect on diversity, as well as the diversity of the city of Glendale. This piece truly looked and wished to speak to the Armenian population and, in fact, Artsakh in particular. So, this is the design from Studio 111 of how they see activating this area. And as we said, city council asked that we place three artworks on this street. So, while not the most beautiful representation, this gives you, gives you an idea of the scale of the piece and its approximate placement. Obviously, they will work with city engineering, public works on the exact placement. So, truly a kind of monumental piece. Next up, I just want to share, Arts and Culture did propose, did look at alternate pieces. So, another piece they looked at for the overhead was this louvered canopy piece by Ivan De Penne Studio. And this piece, you'll notice steel supports, almost mimicking a tree. And then it would attach to the parking garage with these different colored lattice pieces. But they truly felt that this piece, that the, the other piece by Matthew Mazota really captured what they were, were looking for. So, this was, was an alternate piece. I'd also like to take a moment, you were sent just earlier this afternoon, we apologize if you missed it, a letter from the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, Sue Bell Yank. I won't read the entire letter to you in case you missed it, but I do want to highlight a few things. We're very fortunate to have Sue Bell Yank as the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. She has her Bachelor of Arts from Harvard and her Master's in Public Arts Studies from USC, and brings over 20 years of arts administration experience and is an appointment of Mayor Devine's. She writes, and again, I'll just go over some of the highlights of the letter. "After reviewing over 200 applications, I feel strongly that the artists we chose were imminently qualified, consummate professionals working to an extremely high standard, with proven abilities to design, fabricate, install, and manage all aspects of this, these monumental projects. These designed pieces that were unique, artistic in form, extremely memorable, and culturally relevant. These will not just fade into the background as public art sometimes does, but become iconic landmarks in people's minds. The curtain gateway, which is the next one I will show you, is supremely memorable. This won't look like something every city has, it will be unique to Glendale. We love its dynamic nature. We wish these pieces to represent our city's diverse cultures. The artist proposed working with a local Glendale poet or groups of poets to create phrases in multiple language spoken here that would be inscribed on the sculpture." In regards to this piece, "Bountiful," she writes, "We were drawn to the kinetic form and cultural relevance of bountiful. It provides a shaded meeting place, seating, and images of the bountiful fruits and flowers of the Artsakh region, referencing Armenian culture, history, in a way that speaks to all the diversity of our city." She closes with "conducting a professional, thorough, equitable, and transparent process that has comprised hours of extremely careful consideration on all our parts. We thank the council for their consideration and our recommendations." So, again, this is the first piece, "Bountiful," and then I'll move to the second piece we're looking at today.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yes.
May I object and ask, I don't know if, if we can take these one at a time, if any of my council members, colleagues have a comment? I have two questions. Does anyone else have a question of any kind or a comment? Okay, my, I'll just ask my questions. First of all, these are wood slats. When the wind blows, are they going to be like a wind chime, by any chance, making noise?
I, I think they'll make some noise, but it won't be like a true wind chime.
And what about lighting? What about lighting for this tree? What is it going to look like at night?
So, the artist did share a visual of it uplit in that video, just very briefly. So, there will be lighting to accentuate the tree in the evening.
Uplit, so it's from the ground up, or is it?
That, that's what he proposed. I'm sure as they get into engineering, they'll work through the best way to light the tree. But it will be lit in the evening.
Okay, because I think that's really important. It's, it's a, I, I, personally, I like it, but I want to make sure that it lights, it's, it's well seen and enjoyed at night. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes, maybe it already has been said. What's the material on the tree? What kind of material?
I believe it is a mixture. I believe it uses fiberglass, but I, if that's different, I will get back to you with that.
And what's the weight of each piece? Because, and how it has been secured? Because, you know, sometimes we have such a winter and here 70 miles an hour is not unusual for our areas.
No, and this is very much, Artsakh, as you point out, is very much a wind tunnel. They will actually run, it would be typical for a piece of this magnitude to run wind tests on it and ensure that it will stay intact in the wind. But it is, I don't know the exact weight of the slats, but all of that will be run through structural engineering.
That's what I was worried. They did that calculation or not? Because, you know, and how it's secured also, when you figure it out, let me know, please, or the council.
We'll circle back to you, sir.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any, Councilmember Kasakian?
Yeah, so, while we're commenting on this one, first of all, I'm glad that we're having an injection of, of art and the serious installations throughout the city. I think that's important. I think it sends a clear message that we're supporting the arts, we want to see more of these, and they enhance the quality of life. And this one in particular, I mean, I'll be honest with you, this, I like the, this design, I like the tree concept of it. And I think that it's going to be something that's gonna be very unique in the entire area. It kind of reminds me in terms of its uniqueness, kind of like Cloud Gate in Chicago or the shiny bean, as some people have called it. I can see people wanting to come, take photos or selfies, you know, art, I guess some measure of it is whether it's selfie-worthy or Instagram-worthy nowadays. My, my concerns are that although I think the artist has tried to tether it and tie it to some connection to Artsakh, Artsakh, the fact that there is just imagery of flora or fauna that is indigenous to that region doesn't really quite do justice to what I think the intent is of council and others previously who named the street after Artsakh, and to try and kind of give that part of the world continued life beyond the political events and what is transpiring. I mean, obviously, what we're seeing in Europe today and how tenuous a lot of times the existence of human beings are in some place. If this is the design and the final design and it's going to move forward with those images, I think it would be appropriate to at least have something along with this that would explain what the images are, what this installation is, and what its significance is to Artsakh and the region. So, if that has been already considered, fine. If not, I'd like to make it a suggestion. Otherwise, people will walk by this and they'll just see it as a beautiful tree. By the way, Artsakh is home to one of the oldest trees in the world, which I'm assuming this was part of the inspiration for this.
It was.
Dr. Schaefer nodding. But no one's gonna know that. And long after, you know, the, the guns have been silenced and God forbid, the people have left that piece of earth, this will just be a pretty tree that some will claim looks like an overgrown wind chime, which I don't. So, what are we doing to ensure that people will know that there's a connection here?
I think that's absolutely. I think that's absolutely an appropriate suggestion. And in fact, we would notate that via a plate, via information, further information. So we will absolutely incorporate that into this installation. I think that's important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I guess we're ready.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, did I hear Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, yeah, I just, and all these comments that, that my colleagues are making are really great. I, I just, as I'm looking at this, you know, and I'm, and I heard Councilmember Agajanian talk about kind of the structural issues. I'm also wondering, you know, how over time, how does, how do, how do we maintain this? How do we keep it clean? You know, we have birds here, we have, we have dust, we have, you know, other, other things. And, you know, how, how do we maintain it? Do we, do we, do we have replacement slats if they get damaged? Just maybe talk a little bit about that. What's this going to look like in 20 years?
So the artist is required to give us a, a maintenance plan for the sculpture so that will be included. And we will have sources for additional slats if they need to be replaced and so on and so forth that will also be insured. So we will definitely have that maintenance plan in place and we will keep it looking as best we can for as many years as we can because this is a permanent sculpture.
Okay, yeah, because I think the worst, you know, it looks great now, but, you know, we don't want it to look all dilapidated in, you know, 10 years, 20 years from now and, yeah.
I agree.
All right, thank you, thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Let's move on to the next one.
So next up, we have Curtain by Paul Coxedge Studio. So this piece is a true gateway. Many of the pieces that were submitted were not so literal as far as providing a gateway. So this literally would be a gateway into the district. And as I stated, as I read the letter from Chair Sue Bell Yank, she intimated that the artist was completely in agreement to putting some sort of, etching some sort of poetry onto these, these wisps of paper, if you will. They're not paper, they're actually made of, of steel, but that they would be etched with some sort of poetry reflective of the diversity of Glendale and its various languages spoken. There is an alternative. The alternative that Commission considered is called Clip by Christian Muller Studio. This piece is certainly iconic. It would actually move with the wind. Public Works did have some concern about placement of this as far as closeness to the street. But this was the alternate piece and it certainly, there is nothing like it in the Los Angeles area. And so it certainly would be iconic from that standpoint. But Commission felt very strongly about the Curtain sculpture from Paul Coxedge Studios. So that is the other piece we're bringing to you today. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have and go through next steps either before or after the motion is passed or continued.
Do you have a video of this one and how it would look?
We do not have a video. The artist did not submit a video. It also does not move in the wind at all. So there's no movement in this piece. It just has the illusion of being, moving in the wind.
And the lighting?
Yes, this piece, the, yeah, the artist has proposed uplighting on this piece. So we see it here. This happens to obviously be a, a night visual and it has LED lighting.
Okay, Councilmember Kasakian, go ahead, sorry.
Um, so, again, I, I hesitate to, to express my, my, my tastes because I know that art is subjective and I, it's the reason we have an Arts and Culture, Arts and Culture Commission. I think this is unique. It's certainly not something that moves me or excites me as much as the previous proposed installation. I don't know if it's just the, I get the curtain part of it. I don't know how it's going to look. I mean, this could be something that could look really unique. Or it could be something that maybe, that may make an individual that's a commoner and someone with really no taste like me cringe as, as I drive by it. On the other hand, I think the other piece that you just showed that was considered is more interesting. I think it was called Clip.
Yes.
You know, again, I, it's just a little too far for me to, to grasp and for me to appreciate. I mean, if it actually looked like a giant paper clip and I think it would actually garner some attention and would be unique. I don't know if it would, some people would consider it an advertisement gone wrong for Staples stores. But, you know, I, I, I mean, we laugh at these giant oversized things, but one of the things I think is, I think of the Nelson Atkins Museum of Art in Kansas City, which is a phenomenal museum if anyone ever gets a chance to visit it. And it has two giant shuttle cocks on the lawn that are these massive shuttle cocks which are used in Batminton, by the way, for anyone who may not know. Those are iconic and unique and I think they're very well-recognized and a part of the Kansas City landscape. These, you know, I will defer to the experts on the Arts and Culture Commission and what we've entrusted them to do. But I will say that the first piece I, I am more excited about based on the renderings.
Thank you for your honesty, Councilmember Kasakian. That's why we're not on the Arts and Culture Commission. Anyone else, councilmembers?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I hadn't seen Clip before and, and I do kind of like that. But what was, so on the commission, what was the, was it unanimous? Were, were there strong feelings one way or the other? Can you give us a little bit of color as to how that?
Actually, it was, on this piece, it was unanimous that they were all, you know, very enthralled by this piece. And they, they all really liked this piece.
Okay, and I feel the same way as Councilmember Kasakian and probably the rest of my colleagues. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, be one to judge this, but, you know, and, and that's why we have, that's why we have such great people on our Arts and Culture Commission. That's why we have you, that's why we have, you know, Jennifer and, and great people on staff, so. But I guess, okay, so then a question is, I mean, maybe you said this, I'm sorry if I missed that. What's the material, what are those, what are those waves made out of?
So I believe they're made out of steel.
Okay, so they, they, they will hold in that position that you're saying they don't move? And I guess you're going to do all the structural stuff to make sure that they don't kind of break off and hit somebody in the head?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. The other, the other thing that I, I did hear a few comments, and I mentioned this in the briefing, about the placement of this because I know the idea is, is to activate this area. However, you know, we have a big box store on one side. We have a, we have a, a parking lot on the other side and it's hard for me to picture now this area being active. Like what else, and, and I think you were going to maybe talk about or shows kind of a, a longer-term vision for what this part of Artsakh might look like? Are you, are you able to do that?
So this part of Artsakh for this piece is here. So it is at the corner of Broadway in Artsakh. And that's where that piece would go. So this is.
Do you not, you don't have the rendering to show us what it actually would look like?
No, again, apologies, please.
That's okay, go ahead.
No, we, all we have is what the artist submitted to us. So this, this artist did not submit the design superimposed on the streetscape.
And, and staff couldn't do that? They couldn't, I think that would help us with our decision. You know, when, and, and I hope I'm not cutting off any of my account, my colleagues, but my, I don't know, my vision of was, of inviting a, something that's inviting to people and, and fun and, and exciting. And so that was why I kind of liked that louvered canopy. That was kind of like my vision. And of course, again, I'm not on the Arts and Culture Commission, so I'm, I'm not a, an art critic. But I, I would, I would really like to see what this looks like before I okay this one on that site. I don't know about my colleagues, how they feel about that. I mean, we saw a rendering.
No, Mayor, I would support that. I would support that. And I think that, you know, I, I'm thinking about this more. I'm just worried about some of the maintenance and the look of that, just looking at how it's almost looks like it has these very, you know, I want to say it looks like shredded paper, but I'm not going to say anything that someone will say yes, doesn't know what he's talking about. But I'm envisioning palm fronds and leaves and branches possibly falling or getting, I don't, I just don't know how it stays clean and is maintained.
So, I apologize if I might. The artist does, again, have a maintenance plan for that piece. And there's actually, the company that would be maintaining it is based in Sun Valley. So it's very close to us, just up the 5 freeway. And so they would be charged with cleaning that piece. It would need to be power washed and could be power washed probably annually. And so I, I think it will, you know, stay looking good for a very long time to come.
I, I also want to say that I think the, the photo that we have or the rendering that we have, it looks very dark. It doesn't, it just doesn't look inviting to that placement on, on Artsakh. So I, I would really like to see what it would look like in the daytime. You know, if it, if it is inviting, does it, does it invite me in? I mean, I think that's what we need and that's what we, we all want. A, an art piece that will invite us in. And, and looking at this picture that's in our report and on your presentation, I, I don't get that feeling right now. And I, I understand, I, you know, I'm not an art, art critic or, but I would certainly like to, before I okay this one, I would like to see what it looks like, what it will look like.
So, Madam Mayor, we, we do have two separate motions. So if we'd like to move Bountiful, Matthew Mazato Studios piece, now we could come back to in the near future with other visuals of that piece lit as well as superimposed on the new Artsakh streetscape.
Okay, I, do any of my other colleagues have any comments on this one? Councilmember Agajanian or Najarian?
I do.
Go ahead, please, please.
So can we go back to the graphic of the piece itself? Yeah, I have, you know, I have some serious concerns about the structural integrity of those slats. I mean, they look like vertical blinds essentially that are shaped and upward turned. And we get wind, you know, we get winds in Glendale. We get 50, 60 mile an hour winds, gusts even more. I don't know how that's going to maintain. I mean, there's no way, there's no way that a piece of, I don't know what the width of those slats are, but a piece that's affixed at one end and then turned down and then up again with a, I mean, let's put it this way. I've had, I've had fences that, that residents have been turned down for because they say it doesn't meet like 60 or 70 mile an hour wind safety issues. So there is no way this thing is going to, you know, bring down one of our inspectors, would you, from Building and Safety? They're not going to approve that anyway, anyhow. I mean, the tree, iffy, but it looks like there's a lot more support on the tree. But put an 80 or 70 mile an hour wind force against that? You know, what do they call it? Where are the engineers? Where are the engineers in the room? You know, you've got the, the surface area that is impacted by the wind. No way is that going to keep its form. And we'll be lucky if those slats don't even fly off. As a studio piece, it's beautiful. I like the, I like the delicacy, the fragility, the lighting and all that. But for something outdoors, no way. That's just, I mean, where are the engineers? Chime in, you guys.
Here I am.
All right, what do you think?
Go ahead.
How's that going to support a wind force against it?
I mean, it looks beautiful, but it's dangerous for outdoors, in my opinion. And there are, some of them are sharp edges. If that comes down and hits somebody's head or, I don't know, wherever part of the body, it's going to go in and makes big, big, major damage to the person. This is, in my opinion, for outside, this is dangerous. Looks beautiful, but not for outside. It should be somewhere indoors. So I have concerns with this. I, I'm worried if we put this, we're going to cause some sort of problem for ourselves.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Council, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Member of City Council. We have obviously heard all your comments and do share some of your concerns. As was stated, Dr. Schaefer stated, if you desire to move forward with the first art piece, we could, you could approve that motion. And we allow us the time to, to bring back the, the second art piece with responses to your comments and concern. Let us check with our Building and Safety Division, with our structural engineers and as such, and we'll provide answers to your, your questions.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move that based on, to come back and tell us on that, the former, the other one. Also, also to tell us how those pieces are secured. I mean, we can approve this, but on condition we hear that those pieces which are hanging are really secured. Still, this has also some sort of, I'm worried as, as we discuss, 70 miles an hour wind. I don't know how it's secured and how it's going to stay in place.
Okay, okay, Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. Very, very good. I think what we do, we need now is a motion authorizing the, the artwork by the Bountiful. So I think we're all in agreement that we're okay with that one. We like it. And so, so let's, we have a motion to approve agenda number, item number one on this.
Yes, I move that on condition of telling us how they, how they're going to secure the pieces.
Safety aspects, okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And just for that, that's item 2A on the agenda, Mr. Jimmin.
2A, right.
2A.
Shall we do a roll call now, Garcia? And then we'll go to item number two. We'll kind of give our, or do you want us to just bring back?
I think since, I think since you're going to give, you're going to approve that one and give direction on the other, I think you should take a roll call on that one, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's have a roll call on, what is it? 2?
2A.
2A.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, and I think on the second, the Curtain, not only do we, does council, what I'm hearing is council wants a report on, on the safety of this, this particular piece. And also, I, I'd like to request if the Commission has any other, besides the clip, any other choices, alternatives that we might look at? If we decide, for instance, that this one is not appropriate for outside, that maybe when you bring back the report on this one, you also have some alternatives for us to look at?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Is that direction enough for staff?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. And what's the next item, please?
The next item would be number three,
Next item would be number three, Public Works, regarding further recommendations on the state of the community forest. A motion to set Glendale's citywide tree canopy goal at 25%. Resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing city manager designated amen contract 8000974 for city tree services with West Coast Arbors Incorporated. Increasing the contract amount by $250,000 to $7,306,000 for the purpose of utilizing Measure S funds to plant trees.
Thank you. And how appropriate this is to come to us on Arbor Day. And I apologize to all that were at the Arbor Day celebration today that I mentioned that this was coming to council tonight, and here it is this afternoon. So I hope they did their homework and saw that it was coming today. With that, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This was done by design, but thank you for mentioning it.
Of course it was.
This is, Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, this is the third report on the subject, following two other reports that staff presented to City Council back in May and September of last year regarding the state of the community forest and its maintenance. And it's also incorporated recommended actions based on council comments. It also includes comments and recommendations that were made by the Sustainability Commission when it was presented to them, I believe, last month. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Yazdan Imroni, Director of Public Works, to introduce the item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. We are very excited to bring this item back on such an auspicious day, as you mentioned, being Arbor Day. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, we have taken the council's recommendations and directions in our two previous visits to the council and as well as the Sustainability Commission comments, and have a short report for you on our recommendations to move this forward. Primarily, our recommendation is to establish a policy of 25% canopy coverage for the city so that, you know, we can pay attention to those areas of the city that are underrepresented in terms of the tree plantings and to have this additional funding so we can use that for expanding our tree planting efforts. So with that, I'm going to ask our urban forester, Mr. Lauren Click, to provide us with that presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. Please give me a moment to share this presentation. Okay. So as Mr. Imroni said, this report will address some aspects of community forest policy that we discussed previously. As background for council and for the public, we first came to council on May 18th of last year regarding the state of the community forest at council's request. And after that report, council directed staff to return with policies to adopt this canopy goal, explore these funding sources to return to our six-year maintenance cycle and increase the planting and watering of climate-appropriate trees. Council also requested that we explore additional private tree protection measures. So on September 21st, we returned to council, and we presented a detailed citywide canopy coverage report and recent tree loss and our planting plan to plant 7,500 new trees over 10 years, so that's 750 trees per year, to reach that 25% canopy goal. We also provided some additional private tree ordinance information. And so council directed us to return with those informations. Additionally, as Mr. Galanian said, we presented to the Sustainability Commission on February 3rd. And so we returned today to incorporate not only the sustainability recommendations, but to cover additional neighboring city treornances and the canopy goal and Measure S increase as discussed. So in terms of our canopy coverage, we do recommend that 25% canopy goal. The council policy that states this goal specifically will boost the city in competitive grant applications. I believe some council members earlier at our Arbor Day presentation that Public Works was a recipient of a CalFire grant for greening South Glendale. And the CalFire representative stated that council's support in these previous meetings in the state of the community forest was a major reason for that issuance to the city for this grant application. And so, of course, our tree locations will be targeted as part of this program to ensure all portions of the city are helped by the planting program. So, of course, if people in other parts of the city that currently have trees, request trees, they're absolutely able to continue to request those trees and to have those trees planted. And each year, grants and requests in our budget process will be focused on these council-directed annual maintenance and planting goals. So to start this planting program, we do recommend to increase our tree maintenance contract with West Coast Arbors by $250,000 for the Measure S plantings. The tree locations are being finalized, but these are 500 trees along city streets and 100 trees within our city parks. The species selected, again, will only be drought-tolerant, site-appropriate trees, based on the nature of the neighborhood, based on the specific location in that neighborhood. Trees in suburban settings, we have heard at other meetings, that they might only have a lifespan of 30 years on average. But the intent of this program is to plant trees in these right place, right location, to expand that lifespan significantly, as we see with some of the oldest trees in our city, which are approaching 100 years or more. So next, I'd like to turn to some of our neighboring communities and private ordinances. So this is a comparative table. This is in the accompanying report, and specifically covers Glendale, La Canyada, Flint Ridge, and Pasadena's private tree protection and some relevant fees or replacements. As a reminder, Glendale does protect six native tree species at the relatively small six-inch trunk-size diameter. In comparison, La Canyada, Flint Ridge protects trees that double that at one foot, plus Deodar Cedars within one specific historic district. And again, if those Deodar Cedars are within 20 feet of the roadway. And they also protect non-residential trees if they're over five feet tall. So that's trees outside of the residential areas. From Public Works' earlier presentations to council, we surveyed 20 comparable LA County communities. And five of those communities did protect additional trees as compared to Glendale. So Pasadena, on this table, they're the clear outlier in the scale of their protections. They do protect about 130 native or exotic tree species. In addition to that, Pasadena also requires that any tree removal requires a replacement or in lieu fee, although that fee for non-protected trees is half of what you see on this table here. So for example, if the replacement ratio is 2:1 for a protected tree, for a non-protected tree, it would simply be 1:1. So in terms of the staff that implement these policies in Pasadena, they have seven planning staff that implement and review tree permits and enforcements provided by code. La Canyada, Flint Ridge follows a similar action with five planners. In Glendale, we do have one city arbors that's dedicated to permitting and enforcement as part of their existing duties, and of course, with code compliance heavily involved. One thing that we'd like to highlight with Glendale is because unlike those cities, we do have a professional arborson staff reviewing these permits. It does allow us to provide for additional care for trees instead of removals. So our treornance does allow us for the flexibility also when it comes to onsite replacements. For example, Pasadena's ordinance might require up to 12 trees as replacement, which is often more trees than a site may effectively fit. We also like to say that the flexibility of their replacement tree size is important as some native trees may be rare to find in some of the larger box sizes. And having that flexibility does help us work with applicants to find nurseries where they can get those trees. So Glendale's sophisticated planner view within arbors does involve informed design decisions and recommendations. And it also requires consistent monitoring during construction that allows residents the flexibility to improve their private property while still preserving these trees. So this level of customer service does involve extensive cooperation between departments, generally between Public Works and multiple departments within CDD. But we do think the system's well-suited for the preservation of private trees and effective at establishing and addressing the scope of the city's established tree protections. So if council wishes to add additional trees modeled on the examples of other cities, we do caution that without additional staff and resources, the efficacy of enforcement is likely to be uneven due to our existing span of control. And enforcement is a critical part of this process, not because it's punitive, but because even avoidable or seemingly minor construction damage could cause a tree to dial or fail years in the future. And that would, of course, defeat the resources invested in its protection. So relatedly, at the February 3rd meeting, the Sustainability Commission did discuss the reports on this topic and raise some additional points, including some relevant to that previous slide. So among other recommendations, the commission requested that the city consider banning palm trees as a species to be planted. The commission also highlighted three cities' tree lists that exist and asked for clarification on how those departments communicate when it comes to tree selection. And the commission also requested that council consider protecting additional private trees in addition to the indigenous tree program. And some of those trees, species specifically mentioned were the jacaranda, deodar cedars, magnolia, maples, and other trees. But the commission did emphasize the importance of finding a balance between our current indigenous tree ordinance and the wholesale protection of every tree in Glendale. So regarding palm trees, I'll start with those. We do agree with comments from the commission that questioned the suitability of palms. These trees do require frequent trimming. They cost more to trim and dispose of waste. And of course, they provide less shade and associated benefits than a typical tree. But Public Works' practice is not to replace palms except along streets such as Royal or Brand Boulevard, where areas are part of that area's identity, or those palm trees are part of a specific historic district, which is also the same practice that the city of LA follows, for example. So to that note, we've planted 12 palms total since the year 2000. And for that reason, we would not recommend a ban as it removes the flexibility to plant in the very, very rare cases where it may be appropriate for the site. Regarding the various tree species list, there are three lists. There's, of course, the Public Works designated street tree list, which we've discussed previously at council, the GWP shade tree program, and a zoning ordinance related to parking lots. To start with the GWP shade tree program, that is intended for private property to reduce energy costs. And that also would be a species that the resident prefers in their private yard. So there's no need for Public Works' involvement on this level. But GW's list includes trees suitable for those landscape yards and is supervised by a consulting arbors with that department. So our designated street tree list is more diverse across the city by design and based on the characteristics of the neighborhood, existing street trees, parkway space. Finally, regarding the zoning ordinance and the parking lot tree list, we would recommend simplifying this list. It currently lists specific species, a limited number of specific species. And Public Works would recommend that we instead just suggest species sizes and low water or drought tolerance for those trees to help prevent future trees from becoming incompatible with its intent. Finally, the Sustainability Commission did suggest a number of species recommended worthy of private protection on private or public property, as mentioned previously. Public Works does have some concerns regarding species-level protection of exotic species. And that's due to the uncertainty of their suitability to Glendale's current or expected climate. For example, the magnolia unfortunately is unable to handle our increasing hot days, which causes canopies to die back year after year across the city. And they also have surfacing root structure, which causes those roots to seep to the surface. The infrastructure's damaged, and that leads to additional dieback. One additional risk, unfortunately, of protecting species wholesale is the risk of pass. So for example, our native sycamore currently protected by the indigenous tree ordinance. It's being devastated by a type of beetle, and that's greatly increasing our permit applications for management or for, unfortunately, removal. But that tree will always have a place in Glendale due to its, well, it's an indigenous tree, and it has importance to local wildlife and will remain suitable to Glendale even in a changing climate. Unfortunately, that may not be able to be said for every exotic species, many of whom are also unfortunately susceptible to this pass. So one other species that the Sustainability Commission mentioned was the jacaranda. So I'd like to take this as a case study, as it is our official city tree as of 1972. This tree is certainly more drought tolerant than other species mentioned. But that's because it's native to the dry tropics of South America, meaning that it can handle extended periods of drought, but still does require additional water than is available in Glendale. Of course, the issues of this tree is that it is prone to wind damage, as any business owners or residents in Montrose or Kenneth Road are aware after even a minor windstorm. And it does need some adequate growth space to thrive. If you think of the best trees, the best examples of this tree, they're in the Glen Oaks median. But I think they're also a good example of a beautiful tree and a good example of a tree that has a complicated relationship for residents nearby. So when we do tree work within the city with Public Works arbors, we often hear, "Oh, I love my neighbor's tree," in relation to this tree. But we do have about 2,000 jacarandas currently protected as city street trees under our street tree ordinance. So if council does wish to expand additional trees similar to some of our neighboring communities, we might recommend an alternative, multi-layered approach for council's consideration. So if, for example, council desires the jacaranda, for example, as the city's official tree or another specific species, special considerations could be codified within our existing street tree ordinance framework. So for example, currently, trees in historic districts are afforded special consideration in terms of street tree protections. So this in practice means that projects are subject to additional tree protection measures, more so than our usual already stringent protection measures, where removals may be granted due to cumulative impacts. It would also mean that any tree removal granted, it would have to be replaced with that same exact species as removed. Similarly, we do recommend protection for parks trees as well under the framework of our existing street tree ordinance. As background, Public Works did assume responsibility for city-owned trees in 2019, including parks trees, but this is not codified. So these trees could be protected under a wider public tree ordinance. And this would not impact city operations, such as those of GWP or community services and parks. As city operations, we are all exempt from the tree permit requirements. This benefit would be a codified method for which to protect all city trees in cases of vandalism or development on a parcel nearby. So additionally, we might recommend to council that they consider protection of any tree in the city, public or private, of a certain trunk size that could be considered a specimen quality in terms of both size and condition. So one recommended target might be trees that are, say, 30 inches in diameter. The trees of this size are the largest in the city. They provide important benefits, not just to where they grow, but to the entire neighborhood. So for example, deodar cedars, they commonly reach this size on private property due to their suitability to our area. We believe that this approach would help our canopy goal as only 5% of our current city public tree population can achieve that 30-inch size due to the limited space available for street trees. Requiring project applicants, as they do with indigenous trees currently, to include any tree species of a specimen size in their tree reports and accommodate those in site design would be one method to assist in the preservation while limiting increased demand on city resources to administer any expanded program. We do believe that conditional factors would need to be included in any policy council considers, as some large trees may have been unfortunately poorly maintained for decades, which might make them unsuitable for protection in the future. Additionally, if council would like to increase the scope of our city's tree protection measures, we might recommend considering an in lieu replacement fee as well. And that would be based on the appraisal of the tree, as in Pasadena, rather than our current option in Glendale of a flat fine or fee or a price based on the cost of the city to procure and plant a replacement tree, as these don't come near the existing value to the tree or to the community. So by way of an example, for private trees, project or permit applicants would need to provide the professional tree report, as they already do with indigenous trees, that would encompass every tree on the property that meets those goals, along with the calculation of the value of protected trees proposed for removal. And that would be based on industry standards, and that would be the direct payment to the city. And that means that the tree owner would be submitting a report themselves with that tree value, making them fully aware of the cost of unapproved tree removal or damage that requires removal for trees designated for protection. This would, of course, help to avoid situations such as in the past where the city levied significant fines that surprised the community. Finally, Public Works does recommend adjusting the zoning ordinance, as described earlier, in terms of parking lots to simply require trees of a certain minimum canopy size and a drought tolerance. So in summary, Public Works does recommend to sustain the urban forest to adopt our 25% citywide tree canopy goal. To get that started, we recommend increasing our current maintenance tree contract with West Coast Arbors by $250,000 to begin the funding, begin the planting of Measure S-funded tree planting this fiscal year. Additionally, we recommend expanding protections to all city-owned trees rather than just park trees and indigenous trees, and perhaps special protections for city jacarandas or other trees the council desires. And again, if council does wish to pursue additional private or special public tree protections, we recommend a size-based framework where trees are based on their actual value and protected of that specimen size and quality. So I'm now happy to turn this over for council's questions or comments.
Thank you very much for that report. Questions, comments from council? Who would like to go?
Who would like to go, anyone like to go first?
Madam Mayor? Can I just make a prefatory comment? The information regarding the city's tree protection ordinance was for information, to provide some information. If council wants to have a discussion regarding expanding that, it should ask us to do that, and we'll bring that back for an agendaized discussion.
I see. Okay. All right. Would anyone like to bring this back for more discussion, or we can just approve the two items, a motion for a tree canopy goal of 25% or dispensing for competitive bidding? What, does anyone want to bring this back for further consideration?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in support of the 25% goal. I'm in support of the additional contract amount for the, what is it, West Coast Arborist? And I would like to, I would like us to do something, and I'm not exactly sure what that something is right now, but to do something to enhance our protections of trees on private property, sorry. And I do, I do think Mr. Click has, you know, given us a lot of good thoughtful background and analysis, and so the idea of what you're calling a size-based framework, I like that term, a size-based framework, and then your suggestions about the, you know, in lieu fees being based on, what did you call it, based on some kind of an appraisal value, right? I mean, those all seem very reasonable to me. I don't want to create rigidity for the sake of rigidity, so, you know, to the extent we can do it and still maintain some flexibility, I think that'd be great. So yeah, I very much would like to see that come back and have us decide on that. But I guess right now, it's just these, these points. And yeah, the 25%, and I think it's worth people understanding that that 25% goal, if we get there in the next 10 years, that basically brings us back to where we were 10 years ago, before we lost so many trees, after we had to cut back, I guess for financial reasons, cut back our planting schedule and our maintenance schedule. So this gets us back to where we were, and I think that's good, and hopefully 10 years from now, or even maybe we'll get there earlier, then we can talk about what comes next. But, so I don't really want to, you know, position this as the end goal, but I think it's a good, it's a good target to kind of get back to where we were. And I really, really like the emphasis that was throughout the report on, you know, the census tracts that currently are the poorest when it comes to trees. And just on that one thing that I would like, if possible, to see some kind of periodic reporting, maybe it's once a year or something on, you know, by census tract, how we're doing, and which are the, kind of, so we have, maybe we have some metrics, more granular metrics about, you know, where we want to get on some of the really, you know, the denser and more tree-poor areas of the city. But anyway, overall, you know, really appreciate this report. I appreciate the work, Mr. Click, that you, that you're doing, and the whole team, it's really amazing. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Then I saw Councilmember Kasakian have his hand up, too. So my question is, how much of a challenge is it to keep newly planted or newly replaced trees adequately irrigated? I know the report talks about the gator bag, is that what you guys call it? And I've seen those attached to some trees on Lexington in front of the next on Lex. But is that enough to keep them, you know, adequately going to begin their root, you know, development? And if not, if not, I think we should develop a little program where neighbors or adjacent property owners, homeowners, can adopt the tree. And I thought you mentioned, I'm not sure if that was in the report, you were talking about a plaque or something that you could hang over a branch, you know, "This tree watered by the Smith family." I think that would be, create some interest, and I know the neighbors would certainly love the trees to grow and flourish in front of their home and in their neighborhood. So if we can do that, I think that would be very helpful. So I guess, is it a challenge keeping them irrigated? That's, that's the core question that I have.
Mayor Devine, members of City Council, Councilmember Najarian. It is a challenge. That's, that's part of what our request for grant funding and through the budget process is for. But certainly, as discussed at our previous meetings, absolutely the idea of a pilot program where we look at some other cities of how they do all that sort of tree adoption, where neighbors take on the watering, where they have durable labels hung from the trees saying how to participate, that's absolutely a program we're interested in continuing.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you. I think it's very appropriate. We are having this report today, and I think it's great that we have this goal of restoring a tree canopy for all the benefits and reasons that we heard earlier today in terms of fighting carbon dioxide pollution or carbon in the atmosphere, replacing it with oxygen, et cetera. I think that we ought to look at our own parkways and all the areas throughout the city, you know, neighborhoods in the northwest, and Rossmoyn come to mind, and in the Spar Heights area where we have, in the public, not the public right-of-way, but in the parkways, we have trees that are not planted. And sometimes homeowners have planted the wrong trees because it has stayed, that spot has remained empty for so long. So I think before we take steps in trying to protect or imposing protections on trees on private property, I would be more inclined for us to do, take care of what we can control and what is our primary responsibility before infringing upon the rights of property owners in terms of what we tell them they can and can't do with trees beyond what already is in place in terms of indigenous tree protections. If we can do that, and we can make sure that we've done our part, then we can, I would be okay with returning and revisiting these issues. But I would not feel comfortable overreaching beyond onto a certain property and requiring someone to do X, Y, or Z.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. Councilmember Agajanian, do you have anything to add?
I'm just, I have some concern, because I have oak trees in my lot. And this winter, basically, we didn't get any rain, and we are coming with more trees. And what will happen with the, I mean, I like the trees, that's why I have beautiful trees in my lot, but where do we get the water? What will happen? I mean, if we are continuously adding the number of trees, then we have to come up to provide water for those, too. I mean, we have to consider that item also. Did you think about what will happen if this situation continues? And next year and years in front of us, it did not rain as much as years back was raining. This winter, we had to add over three and a half inch of rain. So far, it's 0.6 inches of rain we received. So I don't know, with all these trees you're gonna add this year and next year and the following years, then how we will handle it?
Mr. Click?
Mayor Devine, members of City Council, Councilmember Agajanian. Absolutely, the watering is a major issue. Currently, the most common trees in the city of Glendale are about moderate water or high water needs, and that's something that we are looking to change with these planting programs to. There's a group that looks at the water needs of trees. These are researchers in the state of California. And so the tree species that we're looking to plant are all ones that they've classified as very low or low, or in rare cases, moderate water, where there's a lot of turf irrigation in somebody's lawn, for example. And so we'd be planting trees where establishment watering for the first few years, it's absolutely necessary, and then after that point, each tree should be able to survive, will be able to survive, without any supplemental water from the city, because we do need to move away from those trees that require additional supplemental water every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Click. I think we're very lucky to have you on board, and I thank you for all this information. I have a question about the diodor, and people have been asking me for six years to put this on our protected species list, but I notice a lot of them are dying. Is that because of the drought and the heat, and are they sensitive to that?
Mayor Devine, yes, unfortunately, the diadar cedars, they have seemed to be susceptible to our recent drought. I know there's also some pests that affect those particularly, and so, of course, a lot of that is management, treatment. But we did see some really nice, beautiful, mature cedars on, for example, Verdugo come out recently up in Montrose and as you go towards La Crisena, so it's currently a big issue.
Yes, yes, but it's a beautiful tree. I do appreciate and I am supportive of all of your recommendations for the trunk size and the appraised value, the in lieu fees, protection of trees in the historic district. So I am also in favor of you coming back with a, because one of the two items that I was interested in changing or kind of elevating was the protected tree minimum trunk size and the onsite tree replacement issues in private tree ordinance. So I would also like to have another report from you, and in lieu of that, I will take a motion. Say again?
I apologize.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I will take a motion to approve items, what is it, three, A, one, and two.
Okay. Right, three.
Is there a second?
I don't know who moved it, but I'll second it if it wasn't me moved.
Councilmember Agajanian, I believe I heard. So you'll be the second, Councilmember Brotman. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, and we'll look forward to that report coming back. What's next, please?
Adjournment?
Second? Second? We are adjourned at 3:40 PM. Thank you all. Okay, moving on. I will now call the Glendale City Council meeting to order for March 1, 2022, at 3:40. And of course, because of the transmission of COVID, to slow it down, boards and commissions and council will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. Please watch on, you're invited to watch on Glendale TV, Channel 6, ATT Universe, Channel 99, and you can stream it on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, and use your free app called Screenwave and choose Glendale TV. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments will be taken as the agenda item for years. And roll call, please, for council?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here. And that's next, please.
One would be closed session, and one A would be conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Garibian versus City of Glendale, LASC, case number 20STCV06410.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, do you expect to report out on this item?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We will recess to closed session. Thank you. See you later.